Okay, I'll do that.
Malcolte, spread the city council meeting in order. And I entertain a motion to approve this consent agenda.
So moved.
In a second.
All second.
Uh, any further discussion? Question? All those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed same sign. Motion carries five to zero. I'd like to amend the regular agenda to include four A, which would be a discussion of the council at city email. Uh, so now I entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Been moved to second, any further discussion? All those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Um, I wanted us to discuss this tonight and get the council's opinion on what we should do. I know Ruth, you had some issues with receiving that email regarding the suspension of Cody. I think that uh, we really need to be utilizing the city email for city business. Uh, we don't, tha- that's the only way the public has of getting in touch with us when they, when they contact us on the, when they look at the website, that's where they get the emails or emails from. So they can contact us if they need, probably if they have questions or need something done, so.
I don't have a problem with that, Dave. I just don't want it on my personal phone. If the city wants to furnish me a phone to put it on, I'm okay with it. And I received too many emails the same day from Janet, the day I missed the email from Rogan.
I have a question real quick. Ruth, what email address did um, that were you using that I didn't send it to?
It's rherbalfamily@gmail.com. That's my one I used.
Because I have an email today that James forwarded me, and you emailed him from the email that I sent it to.
Yeah, but that's my personal email. I don't want city business coming in on my personal email.
Well, how are you getting it sent?
Gmail.com. It goes to rherbalfamily@gmail.com.
I've got a couple other things.
And Janet sends all her information on that.
I've got a couple other things. This is from our RIT department, Lloyd Davies. And here's his recommendation of why we should move to all city emails. We cannot secure personal emails. He does not have control over Yahoo, Gmail, Hotmail, anything like that. Um, we had a similar incident he sent me in December third of twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one.
That's true.
Where that's actually began, a virus began in our server from a council member's email. Um, personal emails will populate with city email addresses if there's compromise. Um, he wants, he wants to go to this because he has no control over Gmail, anything else. Anything else that's sent to you that could be a virus or anything like that, he has securities in place to protect our security. If they get into our system, they can get into our billing, they can get into anything. So he has a couple of suggestions of why it should be moved over there. Um, right now, we can't whitelist known accounts. Our FBI, CISA, and DH partners are not looking at monitoring emails outside of our mail uh, domain for security at federal level. So a personal email may be targeted by foreign actors. We do not have control over password changes, complexity, length, and history, and we need to keep, we need to try to keep these accounts secure. So our IT department is pushing for us to go this way as well. I mean, it's not just.
We'll furnish this cellphone then. You gave everybody else in the city a cellphone, give us one.
I didn't give anybody a cellphone there, so.
Let me just explain why I've changed from um, rherbal@mariankansas.net. When we first started on the council, that's what I was set up with. And Lloyd told me that there was, excuse me? Lloyd told me that there was a list of all the emails with the passwords that Roger got. And I was not happy with that, so I changed my email. I mean, I'm okay with doing the city, but I don't think my email password should be available to you guys. It's not available to anybody else.
So it's a city email, right?
You can go in and change your password on that, because when Lloyd set mine up on my phone, then I went in and logged in and changed. He set me up a generic or starter password, or then I just went in and logged in and changed it, and nobody knows what it is.
Okay.
We don't have to have your password, but we will have access.
It's all public information anyway, if it's.
That's the entire point of this. It builds transparency. It helps us fill core requests earlier. It helps us do so many different things that we've struggled with doing in the last month that I've had to deal with trying to get through. There's a lot of reasons to do this. In a situation like Thursday and Friday is the exact reason. You said you didn't get an email that I sent to two of your emails. That's just not the truth.
No, you didn't send it to two of my emails.
Yes, I did. I sent it to rherbal@marianks.net and to rherbal@herbalfamily.net. That's two of your emails.
And I haven't used the rherbal@mariankansas.net for about two and a half years.
I send it to Jerry's the same way. I send it to Dave's. I send it to Zach's. I send it to Kevin's.
This could have probably been prevented had you had the current password or email address, and Janet has it.
It could have been prevented if we were using city email addresses too. So I think this is just a, let's figure out a way to, right, like regardless of, okay, you think you didn't get the email. He sent it to an email that you only send emails from but don't receive emails on. This whole thing can be solved if we go to this, and just when we take our phone into Lloyd and he gets it set up.
He'll set you up any way you want to be set up.
Okay.
But he'll set you up any way you want to be set up. If you want to be set up on that iPad, not your phone, he doesn't care, just however you want.
That's what then he gave me a login, like if I wanted to do it on a tablet or my home computer, whatever, you log in, set it up on there, which I've only done on my phone.
Well, because there's no, there's no issue, you guys, even if you do do it on your personal phone. We have access to that email. It doesn't matter. We can have Lloyd pull them whenever we need them. So it's, it's not a fear of losing your personal advice.
So what's the problem with furnishing us a cellphone then?
I, that's a que- that's a question for you guys. I don't have that ability or any ability.
Those that are upstairs in a drawer? We've got thirty some up and upstairs in a drawer. Those cannot be used?
Again, that's not a decision I can make.
I mean, I'm not, I'll speak for myself here. I already carry two phones. I don't want to carry that.
Well, actually, I carry two phones thanks to the rage that they brought my head with.
I'm, I'm just saying, I carry two. I don't want to carry three.
Well, the third one would have been left at home and just check daily.
Do we have a spare phone in the office?
Yeah, we've got phones upstairs. But that's what I'm saying, I don't have the authority to make that.
Okay. Well, I don't have a problem with furnishing a phone if that's what you want. You realize that your personal emails are to, that were sent to the Open Core Act.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I understand that, but there's, but in twenty twenty-one, I do recall when we had that issue with uh, somebody got into our system. And it got in through one of our personal emails that we were using at that time. And if, and I recall Roger gave all of us a phone. Remember that? He did, well, he gave, I get, I think he gave you the choice of, of a phone or having it, you know, having the city email put on your personal phone. And uh, because I had one for a while, and then I finally took it back and just had it put on my personal phone. So if that's what you, is that what you want?
Yes, I think it is.
Okay. Well, then I would move, I would make a motion that city council emails come through the city address. Do you want to hear a second?
All second then.
Been moved to second. Any further discussion? All those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Why don't you get one of the phones and have it activated and take it over to uh,
Lloyd.
Lloyd and have him activate the email. Now, that's the only way you're going to get email addresses, emails from the city now.
I understand that.
Okay. All right. I guess we're ready for number five, temporary CMD license for Halloween. Megan?
Hopefully, this will be the last time I'll have to come bug you about Halloween. Um, but we are hoping to set up a beer garden. Um, it would be in front of S and S Med Spa and extend out just a bit into the street so that there's a little bit more room for people to walk around. Um, and I talked with the ladies from S and S Med Spa about bartending. I use that term mostly because we're not looking to do liquor or wine or anything like that. It would just be canned beer. Um, but so that we would have adults to regulate that and to make sure that we're checking IDs, seeing people in the roped off area. Um, and also kind of to the best of anyone's ability, monitoring to make sure we're not over serving.
Would you, excuse me, would you have wristbands to put on someone to bring it, bring their ID to you?
We can definitely do that. We can have somebody carding at the entrance into the beer garden and do wristbands.
Okay. And then they have to, they will stay within the roped off area?
Yes.
They can't take it outside that area?
They can't take open containers outside of the beer garden.
And the date again, Megan?
October twenty-first. And this is the paperwork for that. I'll let you guys um, pass it around if you'd like. Darryl drew up the map and an artist he is not, so forgive that.
The hours that you're, that you're going to have it set up?
It would be the hours that we have the street closed, so the seventy-eleven that we talked about before.
Do we need this in the form of an ordinance?
No. We're not, we are not approving anything. The only reason these two are in front of you tonight is because obviously we're doing the street closure. That's a big deal. You guys need to be involved in uh, knowing what's going on, what times, things like that. And then the second one is actually in, is going to be ho- posted above us in the ballroom. So other than that, normally these pass through the city clerk's office. They say, yes, we understand that's where it's at, entrance exits, send it to the state.
I was thinking though that.
This is only an hourly thing, Zach, so it's just a temporary permit.
Well, I understand.
Whereas Chiga Wassa Days is more of an event for the weekends.
Right. I thought that in order for her to get the, when she goes to the state, and since it's going to be on public property.
She won't go through the state. The CMB licenses are issued to the state.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Yep, yep, yep. Got you. Yep, thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions? I entertain a motion. So moved. And second?
Second.
Been moved to second, approves uh, temporary CMD license for Halloween. All those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you all so much.
Mr. Magiel, could we back up and get number four?
The approval agenda, we did that.
Yeah, because we approved four A.
Yeah.
With the, with the.
Okay.
Yeah, we did that.
Okay, I asked a question then. Since I didn't know.
Okay.
We have a deal in there for Sherman Williams and um,
That's probably for the fountains, I imagine.
Yeah, one of them was quite expensive though, and that's what I was asking about. One, one by gallons only cost a couple hundred dollars and the other one cost uh, nine hundred.
Yeah, I can, I can probably answer that because I've, I've worked down the park. Those fountains take a special uh, paint in the bottom of it where the, where the water is, and then on the outside rings of it, you can do just regular things.
Okay.
So that's a reason for that.
I'm okay with it then. Thank you.
All right. Uh, number six, Mac Wine Auction Temporary Liquor Permit. Is it anywhere here? I don't see it.
You want Mike?
Mike, you want to address this?
You need, okay. If you need someone to address it, uh, it's, I don't quite understand why uh, we need to do anything. We're applying to the state for a temporary license to have an event in the ballroom. All we need is the clerk to verify that the location is in the city limits and that there's no zoning conflicts.
Well, we don't really need any action on that.
The only reason it's in front of you is because the event is in here, our city building.
So it's information.
Just to, that way no one can call and say they didn't know that it wasn't going on. They didn't know.
And if, if for whatever reason we don't get the temporary license, then it won't happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So that's why, that's on that.
Well, I wouldn't have taken a shot at it.
So that's why that's on that.
Okay. Thank you, Megan.
What's the date of that event?
November fourth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, number seven, proclamation, public power week, Rogan?
Yeah, we put that in your packet. Um, it's Public Power Week. We just got back from KPP. We're doing some different things. Uh, today we had the food drive, which I believe we're going to keep open a little longer now. Tomorrow, we have meet the crew at nine AM for the public. Wednesday, I have an event. I'm going to the grade school to talk to a class there. Thursday, I believe is the breakfast, and then Friday, we're doing a couple other things, going around with pictures of our crew. Well, you'll be seeing some posts on Facebook introducing our crew members and our electric distribution. Um, the Public Power Week proclamation is just a drawn out, and this is an overview of what it is. Says what our utility is, how many how, or how many people we serve, what our distribution's been. More or less a brief overview of the city of Marion and what we've provided through public power, so.
Yeah, I think we're probably supposed to read it. I don't know we have in the past. So this is Public Power Week proclamation. Proclamation recognizing Public Power Week, October first through the seventh of twenty twenty-three. A week-long celebration of the city of Marion year-round service to the community. Whereas we, citizens of Marion, place a high value on local choice over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, not-for-profit electric utility. And as customers and owners of our electric utility have a direct say in utility operations and policies. Whereas the city of Marion provides our homes, businesses, schools, and social service and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and safe electricity employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. Whereas the city of Marion is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens through energy, efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. Whereas the city of Marion is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many customers protections and continues to make our community a better place to live and work and contributes to protecting the global environment. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Marion will continue to work to bring low-cost, safe, reliable, and sustainable electricity to community homes and businesses to serve all the citizens of Marion. Be it further resolved that this week of October first through the seventh be designated Public Power Week to recognize the people behind the public power at the city of Marion for their contributions to the community and to educate customer owners, policymakers, and employers on the benefits of public power. Be it further resolved that our community joins hands with more than two thousand other public power systems in the United States in this celebration of public power, which puts our residential businesses and community before profits. The end. Number eight, airport grass runway repair. Rogan?
So in, in your packet is updated bid from Dolphy Hillsborough. Darren's been dealing with him a lot closer than I have. Last airport meeting, we talked about this, had the bid update, and they want to move forward with one runway, the north-south grass runway. Uh, doing some dirt work, trying to smoo- get it smoothed out before the ends of fall here. So we're hoping to be able to tell them that we're going to go ahead and get it done, and we're, tomorrow morning, actually, Darren and Tim are going to go out and mark out some spots that we can take some dirt that we have for them to begin.
Is the total price, it's three thousand fifty dollars?
Six, so that's half. So it's right under, it's right under seven for the entire runway. That's where half of the runway.
Okay.
So, yeah, with us providing the dirt and location to get any extras, just under seven.
Okay. Any questions?
And then Dolphy and them do it all? I mean, they level it all out?
Do it all, yeah.
What are we, are we just going to, are we overseeding it then after that, or how's that?
Well, they're hoping in spots that they may have to. Darren was talking about a uh, majority of it should be thin enough that that grass will poke through. They're going to do a little bit of seeding, definitely some more of the bad spots, but yes. They're wanting to do it before it starts to get too cold and hopes that it'll come up, that grass will come up.
Is that all the grass runways out there?
That's the.
Under more than one, correct?
Yeah, there's three, because they just abandoned one or part of one. So this is the most frequently used. And since the runway hasn't, with the cracks and everything, Terry and Tybo said that's more or less exclusively what they've been using, so.
Have we notified uh, proper personnel that we're going to close down that runway?
The, which one?
Well, when they're going to receive.
So Darren's gonna, when Dolphy gives him an I, uh, the idea of when he's going to be there, Darren's going to let K dot aviation know. And Mitch is going to put it on all the like Fort Flight and everything like that that is closed until further notice.
Well, we're just doing one?
Just one, north and south grass runway only.
So we're still having the other one open?
The other two will be open, yes.
Okay. All right. Need a motion to approve the cost?
I, I wouldn't mind one, just to give to the airport board, let them keep track of everything.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Been moved to second, any further discussion? All those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Number nine, Oregon fifteen oh six sign regulations.
We put, I think Margot gave me a whole bunch of minutes for the signs.
This has kind of gotten out of order, to be honest with you. Um, yeah, we need to know what changes, if any, you want. And then you really need to send it back to the planning commission for a final okay. Because when it comes to you, you can either send it back, accept it, or.
I think the only thing we asked for last time was minutes, right?
Yeah.
They're all in the public hearing?
Well, Ruth wanted, wanted something in there about um, historic preservation. And we can add that. It's just um, you know, the, the board didn't meet last week because they ended up quorum, so they really need to look at it one more time, once you've got it the way you want it.
Zach, you mentioned something about this sign on the footage up front.
Yeah, I, yeah, I see that there too, right? Margot, we talked about changing, because it says, cannot exceed a maximum of one square foot of sign area for each square foot of lineal street footage, which is two different measurement types. I think what it should read is cannot exceed a maximum of one square foot of sign area for each lineal foot of street frontage.
Yeah.
And we had a suggested change, and like I said, you need to see it, the board needs to see it. And then once it's, everybody's okay with it, we can finalize it. Same time, silly, but that's the process.
I'm confused though, because I just said what we want to change, one of the things that we want to change, but what is, so what are you saying we need to do?
What I'm saying is that that's fine, but then I need to take that, you need to send it back.
With a written recommendation.
Ashley?
I'll uh, I'll make that change, Zach, and give it to Margot.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll just table this tonight?
Well, let's. Yeah, let's make sure we get everything. I'm tired of this thing showing up every week.
I know, I know.
Carmen?
My state statute, once we have our public hearing, we send it to you. That's what you're getting tonight. You review it, and what you don't like within, or what you want changed, or if you like it, go ahead and prove it. But you need to write a recommendation on which ones you want changed, send it back to the planning commission. We will review it. Uh, it could be up to the planning board if they think them changes needs to be made, or most likely they will be, but uh, especially on a couple of them. But uh, then we'll send that back to you, and then at that point, it's in your hands. And you can either approve it or change it the second time around. Roy, just take Walden's.
Okay, when's your next meeting?
Well, Halloween, I don't know.
Yeah, it was supposed to be Halloween, and since they didn't meet last week, we thought we'd try to meet kind of in the middle of the month.
Okay.
So. But I need to see what works for everybody.
Yeah, I guess you'd still have another meeting, uh, if you want to review it, I guess.
Margot, I'd also like to have twenty-two dash three point oh six looked at. It's very confusing, and I think the wording just needs to be cleaned up. And what it states is portable signs. And it says, it shall be unlawful for any person, business, or corporation to place, stand, or maintain any portable signs on any street, sidewalk, or public way within the city limits. Then it goes on to say, if the portable sign is damaged, so what are they talking about?
Okay, I don't like that again.
What I would do is go ahead and you guys take a look at it, write down the ones that you think needs to be changed, write it up.
And let you guys.
Next meeting. Make motions, send it back.
Okay.
It really would help because, you know, I'm, it's been back and forth and back and forth, and help us just get it finished, please.
Then the next one I want you to look at is twenty-two dash six point oh two. And this just needs to be reviewed to see if it's within the state law. There's a Kansas state statute twelve dash seven fifty-nine that you would review. And that's all the questions I'd like to bring up. But I would make a motion to send this back to the planning board for further review with a written recommendation for these three changes.
Can you turn that last one one more time, please? My pen won't work. What's the last one, one more time here?
Yeah, what do you want to change it to?
Well, in here it says, when uh, the zoning administrator denies a request, the business may appeal to the city council. And I think, I think you will agree with me, Margot, that appeal process needs to be um, uniform across the whole book. You can't just pick one section and say you can appeal because you denied something. And I think if you read the state statute, you will understand that it needs to go to the zoning appeals board.
Okay.
But that's your decision. I just want you to look at it and make that decision.
What was that state statute again?
It's twelve dash seven fifty-nine. I have a copy if you want.
Do you want to restate your motion or just send it back to them?
I just moved to send this back to the planning board for further review with a written recommendation, including these three points.
Okay, is the second?
So then Rogan will, is that right, Rogan will write up the changes and send it back?
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed same sign. Five to zero. Number ten, metal billboard on south side of Highway fifty-six, Margot?
Well, you had something in your packet about the difference in price. And uh, we thought since it was more money than usual, we'd just ask you what you want to do. And so you can either go thirty-four hundred and, or if you want something that's supposed to last longer, you can spend another thousand.
I'm sorry, Margot, I don't have anything in my packet.
Yes, I don't mind.
Not at all. So it's. What's the, do we know what, what's the design, what are you, what are you putting on, are we putting on?
Rogan, were you going to have a picture of that?
Nope.
Margot, how long is this supposed to last? This particular sign? What does it say, I guess I should say?
It is a picture of the downtown, this is the, um, billboard contest. And, um, yeah, I, I sent that, and, um, it just says, uh, welcome to Marion and the, the website. You, you've got the one on the north side of the highway, that's the boat and the lake scene with just welcome to Marion and the website. This is for the south side. Um, the idea was to put metal up so that when they take the banners down, there's still something up that, you know, could be left. And, um, so we had the merchants at the billboard contest. Kevin Freeesting won, it's this downtown picture. And, um, I'm sorry, I, I thought it was, yeah.
I might have the picture that's in the center.
You might have it?
Let me see if I can find it.
Um, and it's just, flags are up downtown, it's a scene shooting downtown that the merchants picked, and, um, but then we didn't know which way to go because of the price on this.
When it said that the one would last longer, did they have a, uh, estimation, I guess, of the length?
I, I think, I think Dave Korfick said, you know, maybe three to five years more, but I don't know that, you know...
That would be the metal one?
They're both metal, it's just this one has a vinyl applied to it that makes it supposedly last longer, for an extra thousand.
Do you know, do we know, like, how long the, the metal one, right, like, okay, the metal one, the, the regular, the cheaper option's gonna last five years. The other one you said three to five years more, right, or is it, it's gonna last ten years, and now we're looking at, you know what I mean?
Probably eight to ten, if you go with the higher rather than five.
And I'm assuming the vinyl they're talking about's like UV, I mean, it's made for outdoor, like billboard, 'cause is that coming through Western Associates, was that, okay?
Yeah.
I guess I'd maybe kinda like to see what they thought, like I said, the longevity of each option was, and just make sure that it is obviously designed for outdoor. We have a lot of signs made for our car washes and stuff, and there's a definite difference on the material you have printed.
Well, have you seen the one on the north side of the highway with the boat? 'Cause they, they did that one.
Okay.
So that one would've been your, you know, thirty-four hundred. It wasn't quite that much over there, because it's a smaller sign.
Okay.
And then, if you wanna step it up and, and get the vinyl on there, it's another thousand.
Gotcha. I would almost think that if it's gonna be covered up by other billboards throughout the year, you're saving it some UV. Right, for some of the time, if there's gonna be a chingo billboard over it, or... That's just my thoughts.
Oh, what's your pleasure?
Well, I would almost say go with the cheaper one, because it's gonna be covered up, and we may wanna change the design in five years.
I'll make a motion to approve the thirty-four hundred dollar option for the sign on the south side of fifty-six.
I second that.
They move second, and further discussion? All who are in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those both same sign? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, all email you the picture, so you see it.
We're down to number eleven, council reports, and I have something I need to bring before the council. A few minutes prior to this meeting tonight, I received, uh, information from Chief Cody that he is resigning his position as chief of police immediately, effective immediately. Therefore, I make a motion to appoint Zach Hudman as assistant chief, or, I'm sorry, as acting chief of police. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Then move second, any further discussion? All who are in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those both same sign? Motion carries five zero. That's all I have. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to give a, a good, I, I appreciate what Jim's master is doing for going out and cleaning up some of this junk in this town. And I want you to, I personally appreciate, 'cause I hate junk.
Yeah, you're doing a good job, that's, that's for sure.
Thank you.
I go along with Jerry, you're doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
And I'm pretty sure it's thankless.
Well, you'd be surprised with the neighbors that have to live next to that. You know, maybe you appreciate it, and they're the ones that I think about when I'm at the yields.
Okay.
I think you can see a big difference, you know, what, from what you're doing here.
I'm making progress.
Okay, any, anybody else have anything they need to bring before the council?
Brogan, did we ever get anything else when we talked about the runway on the black, on the blacktop runway?
We just put in a KDOT grant, KDOT aviation grant. Actually, last week, they got submitted, so hopefully, we'll be hearing something on that.
That would be the ten percent match.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's another very good grant.
So hopefully, we hear something on that.
And would that be for the repairs?
Yeah, that would be for the repairs of all cracks in that runway.
Of the blacktop runway?
Yeah, because we were gonna ju, we justified this, it's gonna be a taxiway going forward, we gotta do something to try to preserve this thing.
Okay.
So, hopefully, we'll be hearing back on that. I think Darren was telling me, might hear something back in February, so...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, department reports, back to everything?
Nope.
Okay, Margot? James?
No, not unless you have questions from our department.
Zach?
No.
Brogan?
Oh, very little. Um, this'll go with James, we are looking to update our city codes, as in plumbing, mechanical, electrical building, stuff like that. James has been doing some digging into, well, we oughta make, update those too, so that's something we'll probably be doing this fall. Uh, getting those adopted. And then, let's see, Public Power Week, we already talked about that. All the minutes are on the website, they are up to date, they'll continue to be up to date, and then we're continuing to make small edits and changes to the website daily, so... If you see it changing, that's why, we finally got the training in, and are able to take over our own website and do what we need to do, so...
Okay. Okay. Okay, motion to, uh, number one here, we've got one more thing to go through. Yep. Number four. Anyone wish to raise their gowns?
I wouldn't matter.
Yep, she's not gonna say.
Sorry, we got a traffic jam.
Um, with the revelation of what happened with Cody resigning, that still doesn't cut the cancer out of this community. You know that this against you, that you knew about this by a phone call from Carrie Newell. And, Mr. Collin, you need to explain to the citizens and the community why you contacted Carrie Newell before Chief Cody did and gave her that information.
I'd be happy to, 'cause, yeah. So, I received the same email that Dave got. The rest of the council was also blind copied on that email. The reasoning for that is so that we can't reply all to that email, and end up with a coma violation. So we all saw that email. I called Carrie, because I don't, I don't feel it proper for somebody to walk into a hornet's nest if they believe it's something as simple as approving a temporary liquor permit, or right? Some of this is a check in the box. If they're gonna walk in, I don't think it's right for them to walk into a hornet's nest. So I called to give her a heads up, that hey, there's been some questions raised about you having a DUI in your past. And I said, "I know from my experience that a DUI, as lo, as long as it's not a felony DUI, or your third DUI, does not keep you from getting your liquor license." And I said, "I just wanted to call and give you that heads up." That was the conversation I had with Carrie. I did not have the document that has that, that letter that initial, that got sent later on, that, that Ms. Herbl got from Pam. I did not have that. The only thing I had was the email from Brogan that got sent to the rest of us as well.
So that brings the other question up, is we cannot get Cora requests filled fast enough, but other entities can. Doesn't make sense. You were now presumably accused of informing Carrie Newell that this document existed. From investigations, are we gonna find out that that's true, that you did have the document, that you did not inform her about it?
I, the only thing I have is an email from Brogan, the same one that Dave got, the same one that the rest of us got. It says, "I received this email from Ruth earlier." And it's the email that says, "I believe that, that Carrie's got a DUI, and, and Pam Log has information on this, and I'm gonna contact her and see if I can get it." That's the only information that I had, I did not have that document.
It looks like the business owner that is lying into the paper as well. And Mr. Mayfield, did she call you about this?
I'm not answering any of your questions, I don't, I don't owe you an explanation about anything.
Awesome, that's the transparency that we're talking about in this community. It's about as clear as a pile of cow shit. You are such a chicken shit, you even deleted a public official page that is against a federal violation because you spoke of city business on that public page you made. Mayor David Mayfield, Marion, Kansas, is now deleted, that had city, government, conduct, and also comments on it. And that is censoring the public, and it's federal law. I will be making sure that somebody comes after you on that one.
You're sure to do that, your time's up. Anyone else?
I'd just like a question, did you guys receive that email?
I, I did, I don't remember.
You sent it, so I didn't send it to you.
I know, but you need to let me know if you're gonna send it to everybody else, why not?
It was more of like a-
It was more of a heads up, hey, this is what's, this person has a DUI, and you bring it up, so then, the rest of us probably would've known that as well.
And what it said, what it actually said was, we have Cody check this out.
Right, yeah. That's all it was.
And it also said that you were gonna be asking Pam Log for-
And to uninformation, yeah.
You already knew, so I provided the information to the other four of me, didn't you?
So Jerry, did you get it?
I, I don't, I think I did.
Yes.
You ready to speak?
Yes, I did.
All right.
Um, Mr. Jones keeps talking about, and everybody, this email. Yes, I sent that piece of paper to Ruth and to Phyllis Sorn in regards to Carrie Newell's driving record. One, it was because of, she was applying for a temporary liquor license.
Uh, temporary.
Catering, excuse me, catering. And also, because our law enforcement within the city and the county has known for over twelve years, this woman did not have a driver's license. And had been driving illegally on several suspended licenses. She spent time in Marion County Jail for driving on suspended. So I sent the letter to Ruth and to Phyllis because of that. I sent it to Phyllis because I wanted our law enforcement to be questioned on why they were not doing their job. But we are paying as taxpayers salaries of them and whoever else, including the sheriff's department. You took the time to call her, to call Carrie, in regards to this piece of paper. You didn't call me to give me a heads up that you all knew that there was a, before a search warrant for my home.
I don't have any knowledge of any sort of-
But Mr. Mayfield did.
Well, you're pointing at me.
But, but you called Carrie to give her a heads up. And all these emails going around, and everybody's talking like Ruth then did something dirty, wanting information from me. I sent the piece of paper to Ruth and to Phyllis at the same time, the Thursday night before the city council meeting on Monday. And there's this little dirty web apparently with Mr. Jones, Mr. Mayfield, and now you've gotten brought into it. I can at least say Jerry and Mr. Burke Warner haven't been called in yet, nor has Ruth.
What exactly do you think that, that the web involves me in, that I've-
Well, I've asked for the-
Because I think, quite honestly, the fact that you stand here and accuse me, it bothers me, because I have nothing to hide, and I have done nothing wrong. And you stand here and tell me that I'm involved in this-
You called her?
Conspiracy theory.
You called her to give her a heads up.
Why would I know?
But nobody called to give me a heads up for a fourth search warrant.
I can't notify you about something that I don't know about?
Mr. Mayfield knew.
But you're-
Mr. Vanessley knew. I think you knew.
Ma'am, ma'am.
I don't know.
You're talking to me and saying that I'm corrupt, and that I should've notified you about a search warrant that I didn't know anything about. How could I have done that?
Why did you call her to give her a heads up?
I didn't-
Of walking into a hornet's nest? You know what's that's just-
No, that's all right, I, I feel like I wanna defend myself here, because I'm not okay with being called corrupt and involved in a web of lies. Because that is far from the truth, and I'm not okay with this, and I'm tired of it.
I also agree.
I'm tired of it, because, Miss, your, your police chief put my name on that affidavit, the original affidavit, as if I did something corrupt. What I did was completely legal.
And none of us have said that what you did was, none of us have said anything about it. So, for you to stand here and say that I'm corrupt, and that Brogan's corrupt, and that Dave is corrupt-
I've been asking for the Kansas Open Record Act. Because I want all the information.
We have over forty requests. They are being filled from one to forty-something. So it takes time to fill these requests.
A month to fill these requests.
We had a request that was over two thousand emails, that we have to have our IT poll. That takes time, it takes-
Well, I'm sure you got those to the KPI pretty quick though, didn't you?
That we did what?
You got those to the KPI pretty quick, didn't you?
I haven't ever turned, I don't turn anything over, I have nothing to do with it. It's been taken to outside counsel. Our IT department polls emails, they fill the requests. The only thing I have to do with it is I review the requests that's, here it is, here's gonna be the bill. Yes, they paid it, release the document.
So, you, and I still don't understand this, and I will never get an answer. I don't know why y'all don't have your own counsel, the counsel is for the insurance company.
We have, we do have our own counsel.
Brian Mina?
Yes.
But he's not representing any of this. Everything gets referred to the insurance company's attorney, 'cause that's where I'm getting sent. I didn't get, you didn't send me to Brian, you sent me to Ms. Hill.
Jennifer Hill is assisting with the Cora and coma. All Cora, uh-
So she has all the files from the police report?
She has-
Or the police department?
Everything. In terms of that, I've never seen any of it.
Okay.
That's why you are referred to Jennifer.
My time's up.
No, ma'am, I'm still, you continue to say that I'm corrupt, and even when I've proven that I'm not, you will not back down from that stance?
I was just asking.
But you said that I was into a web of-
You called her. All you have to do is look, there's all these emails that are floating around that Ruth did get or didn't get, or you've just been up here, just, or just a few minutes ago. And said Ruth has got an email, we need to get more information. I had no more information, when I sent her, I sent her.
I know, but what I'm saying is that's what was in the email that I got, right? All I have is the information that I can have, and that email said, "I'm going to ask Pam Log for more information, and I think Co, Chief Cody should investigate this." That's what the email said. I'm just relaying what was in the email. There's no hiding anything.
Will you release that email personally, then?
Will I release the email? It's public.
Right, we can't get it-
It's been filled in the coma request.
It's getting filled, but we can't get a coma, uh, request in over a month now. Would you personally do it?
You've had your say.
You know, he took some of my, he took some of my time, Mr. Mayor.
Yours, you've had your three minutes.
And I've had mine, so, I guess if you wanna talk further, you know how to find it.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second that, all who are in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those both same sign?